Gino. Morning buddy. Good morning. You hungry? You hungry?
Let's get it.
Come on, you hungry?
Let's go.
Come on. The sun's shining. But look at this. My goodness. My goodness, Gino. Morning, everybody. Chad. Adler's swamps, I mean farms. We're gonna move these feeders. Cause I don't wanna stand in the rain anymore or water me anymore than they do. Hope y'all are doing alright. If you're new here, welcome and howdy. If you're old here, welcome and howdy. So this area right here. It's not dry, everything's wet. But. It's drier. So. We're going to. I was gonna surprise you guys, I don't know if you just heard that horn honk. But. Adler's in the truck. Apparently I got far enough away, he lost internet. And he hasn't connected to the cabin yet. Let's move these uh, well. Priorities, right? Let's get little man internet. Then we'll feed, oh my goodness. It's Tessie. Hi sugar. Hi sugar. Alright. So I've been, oh my goodness, she about tossed me in the mud. I've been working with her. She heads to her new home. I'm filming this Thursday. She heads to her new home. On Friday, so tomorrow night. Now they're maxed, I'm walking away. I need a bucket. Hang on. Yes, sir, can I help you?
Yeah.
What you need?
Drink.
A drink?
Yeah.
Oh, cool. I like the volume in your hair this morning.
Yeah.
Yeah. Alright, let me get you a drink, hang on a second. Alright, man, I got a lot to update you guys on today. Lot to update you on. We got. We got bottled water for little man. Forgot his propel and his juice cup. Country boys, building immunities. There you go, boss. Take a drink, it's just regular water, should be nice and cool.
But, but, but it's okay if I die?
Well, you just die in the game, you mean? Oh, you're playing your worms? Worm game?
Yeah.
Oh boy.
Yeah, I did die.
Is it okay? Alright, I'm gonna go feed and film.
Thanks.
So where were we? Oh yeah, hi guys. What's she doing? Huh? What's she doing? What's she doing? Hi, Miss Lucy. Hi Lucy. Say hi to the camera? No? Nope. Little camera shy today. Yep. Bruh, okay. So, I showed a video yesterday. Of Tessie's new boyfriend. Now, he might be one of two or one of three, I don't know, I think they just have one bull. But his name is Magnum. And a lot of you were asking about his horns, cause they don't look traditional or something? But I posted a video of him yesterday, here's the video. A female's horns typically grow out. And a male's, like Fred's, grow up. Or out and up, I should say. I assure you that Magnum is a Highland, he's actually registered. When we bought Fred. We bought him from Hundred Acre Wood Highlands. And. Like Rhett told me at that time. If you don't buy a registered Highland, you kinda just get what you get, you get what's in your head. Like our girls are not registered. Does that mean they're not Highlands? No. Does that mean maybe somewhere in their lineage, is there something other than Highland? Could be, not likely. Boy, this is why. This is why right here. I prefer the poly feeders. This sucker's heavy. Oh my goodness. Alright. Magnum is all bull, he is registered. He's all Highland. And I think he can handle himself with Tessie, we're gonna find out. I ain't never met a bull or heard about a bull that wouldn't give her the old college try. We'll see. It's gonna get. That's gonna be a busy intersection here in a minute. That's June, so I'm not as nervous. Excuse me, pardon me, okay, I'll go this way. I'll go this way. Finn, what's up, brother? Morning giraffes. That feed is pretty rich for the alpacas. But they won't stay there for very long, they'll get run off. Look, this how you know you're the boss. Oh, hey buddy. I don't think I would do that, whoa, 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 whoa. You should come with me. Ready? Get your head out of the way. Watch out. We'll leave that for the chickens, you don't have to eat that off the ground, come here. We're gonna have to move. I think we're gonna have to move uh. Those feeders, brother. Boy, we're wasting a lot, hang on. Alright, boy, we'll see how big the eggs are when they eat that 20%. Somebody commented yesterday. And I'm sure they just don't understand. Commented, they said, "Man, if I had animals, I'd have me a 60 by 100." None of my animals would ever be in the rain. None of the grain would be in the rain. They'd never have to stand in the mud, always be dry. Ma'am, it sounds like you got cows and donkeys and alpacas in your house. These are animals, they're amazing, they're awesome, I love them dearly. But they're built different than us, they can handle it. God made these creatures to be able to handle a wet season. They honestly do it better than we do. Let me think about it. Any of y'all living outside, any elements eating, standing in the mud and still healthy? Nope, no you're not. You know, I'd put more in here, but you get, that's a whole half gallon bucket to yourself. Mama June. How's the baby? How's the baby? How are the teats? Huh? Huh? Looking good. I'm probably not gonna give you guys more. That's a whole pail and a half. I know it's wet out here. There's a reason for that, and we're gonna go up front and talk about it. I wanted to fix the pond. But we gotta drain it first. And I wanted to fix the ditch out front to stop all this water. I'm gonna show you exactly why our property is so wet. And I didn't realize it when we first bought it. I've mentioned it before, every time they grade the roads, the road gets a little wider. And the ditch in front of our property gets a little shallower. Meaning it doesn't hold water, it doesn't move downhill. The property also, right about the alpaca shelter, starts to slope that way. Towards the, whatever highway that is out there. And the problem is, our ditches, 660 feet, are full of water. And our ditches are entirely full, so our water table. Our water up high, like if you look at my neighbors, which I'm gonna go show you. Her ditches are full, I mean, there's a ton of water in them. But it's moving away from the property, it's not flooding her property. Cause that's why this is drier over here, because her property's not flooded. But right in front of us, the ditches are completely worthless, they might as well not even be there. So the ditch across the street is full, that lady's probably not gonna fix it. It would definitely have to be on the county to do it. But our ditch. It comes from her side because it's flooded over there, and our ditch, it floods our ditch, and then it just runs constantly. Now, we're on a hill, so it runs quickly, but. Dealing with this for the next four or five months, that ain't happening. Somebody's gonna come fix it, or Chad's gonna go get him an excavator. And I'm gonna dig a hole. Listen, if I dig them ditches out. I'm gonna be able to put 516 and 518 in it, have them stand on top of each other, I'm gonna dig it so deep. Cause all I gotta do is get that water to go that way, I just need like another foot. Like, my neighbors here, for example. Say my arm is 660 feet long. It's not. Driveways right in the middle. All I gotta do is make my ditch deep enough, but not so deep that it's deeper than neighbors. Let's say the neighbors is like, here. We want our ditch to be here, so it just runs down the hill and away from the property. Right now, it sits in our ditch, and it's so clogged that it doesn't even have to go to neighbors, cause it just overflows our ditch. Man. How y'all doing? I mean, look. That's flowing, man. Excuse me, flow? Name that movie. Boy. Why's that so hard? Get some water started for him. And then we'll go look at the pond and we'll talk a little bit. Cabin's good, tractor's good. All is well. Man, oh my goodness. I don't care how wet it is. Still beautiful. Absolutely beautiful. Wow. God's beauty, my goodness. Six days, technically. Created everything y'all see, everything you know. Six days, God did it. Like that. Oh no, Chad, duh, 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 two atoms slam together, ain't you heard of that? Two atoms slam together and spawn everything from grass seed. To groundhogs, to gophers, to grasshoppers, why does everything start with a G? To man. No, it didn't scooter. Oh, we came from monkeys. Why are there still monkeys? Wow. Absolutely incredible. Our dam is holding really well, I should say the dam. And there is. The spillway. But we've still got a lot of ways to go over here. So, I know water seeks its own level, I know that's the spillway and it'll eventually go over that. We're gonna drain this regardless, I know, it's kind of a tragedy, isn't it? Travesty? Tragedy, I think it's travesty. We're gonna drain it, all of it, gonna drain it. Gonna buy us a big ol' sump pump? Not a sump pump, like a power water pump, trash pump, I think is what they're called. We're gonna get us one, we're gonna drain it, I don't believe there's any fishes in here. That's right, I said fishes. We're gonna drain it, we got somebody that's gonna come fix the banks a little bit. Tell you what, it's looking pretty stinking good though. And remember, I got a seven foot box blade and a 47 horse tractor. So we can do a lot of it ourselves. And I met with the excavator guy that's gonna finish the pond. And he told me he really needed us to drain it, so that way he can see what it looks like and do it safely. And, so that's what we're gonna do. Very pleased, this is uh, the water level has come way up, I mean way up. And the banks aren't bad now. When the pond doesn't have water in it, to somebody who's never dug a pond, owned a pond, built a pond. We really thought that these banks were too steep. But, the previous guy that was here, that's what he does for a living, the new guy that's coming said. "I don't know, man, I think you want them, you know, level like that, I know they look steep, but wait till it fills up." Because what they do is they dig it to where, if, an animal, or heaven forbid. I can't even say it, but heaven forbid one of the boys. Which we won't, there'll be a fence around, I can't even. Strongest fence we've, that I've ever built in my life will be around this pond. Sorry, that rings close to my heart, we know some people, so. If an animal or something got in there, it can get out without having to like, struggle up the banks. Previously, at no fault of the previous seller, how do you guys? Part of the banks were so steep, you felt like you were gonna fall in. And this just looks amazing, it's absolutely amazing. All we need to do is get this dug out right here. And uh, yeah. Let me show you, you're watching me like I matter, we're talking about the pond. See, there's the spillway, and it looks like it's working pretty stinking well. The water could actually come up maybe another foot and a half, like I'm pretty impressed. Wow. That is. Amazing, I wish I could show you the house, okay, let's try this. Let's try it. So, it's not steep, it's not near as steep as it looks, I don't know how it comes off on camera until editing. But while I'm filming this, Adler could easily traverse these hills. Cause no matter how well a child can swim. When that fear kicks in, if something happens. Everything goes out the door. Woo, we got raccoons. Is that raccoon, nah, that's a possum. That's a possum. I don't believe that's a ricky, rickies have thumbs. And here, I'll teach you something too, and I just learned this, I'm no expert. This looks nothing like a coyote or a bobcat. If it was a coyote, it would basically look like a dog print, and you would see fingernails. Because dogs cannot retract their claws, whereas a cat can. So a cat would look like a dog paw, almost, I know. But, you would not see claws. Man. I am very, 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 very pleased with the amount of water and seeing what it looks like. God puts the right people in your life at the right time. For the right build, for the right project, for the right. How are you doing today? In your life, everything from. Providing you with 20 acres, your dream pond, your dream wife, your dream family. God puts all of that in your life at the right time, everything from stuff so big, you can't even fathom it. To just somebody opening a door for you and saying good morning. All of that happens because of God, and none of it happens without God. Woo, that's a big ol' pond, boys and girls. Lot of dirt right here. Oh boy, Adler's honking the horn, hang on. Lost internet, needs a drink? Or he's gotta drain the main vein? What'd we just do?
Um, peed in the mud.
Peeed in the mud? Did we cross streams?
Yeah.
And I'm gonna keep working, hang on. Don't drink that water. Count to 30, then you can drink it. Hi buddy. Am I too tall? There you go. Hi buddy. It's Ray's buddy right there, man. Old Finn. I think he's kinda sweet on her. That's right, Ray likes a man with a beard. Old Finn's got a long ways to go, and I'm gonna eat him before then. I'm just kidding, calm down, calm down, I'm just kidding. Seriously though, it'll look awesome on the wall. Guys fall asleep yet? So cool, man. So cool. Our beautiful mimosa tree. The one and only left. But no, now we need to take those rocks and use my loader. And. Place them along the uh, stream over there and kinda keep it honest, keep it following that natural curve. It'll be really pretty. Really, really pretty, woo, are you guys out of breath, or is it just me? Did we ever get the alpacas food? Don't think we did. Maybe, maybe we should take Tina some food. Alright, I checked on Adler. And then I also forgot, we didn't look at how many eggs we got. Why don't you guys remind me? Come on, Squatch, where are you at? Goodness. Raining hide and seek champ right there. Let's see who's got eggs. My goodness, y'all need to build a boat. Holy cow. Who's hungry? One? That broke, they'll get it, maybe? No? Uh, I should've thrown the dirty ones on the ground. Oops. We've, we've decided, but then it started raining, so. Sometimes we take a pause in life when things delay what you thought you were gonna do. Gonna get another coop, we were gonna get 12 more layers, cause we got two roosters. When we do it. We're gonna move these coops, we won't have to worry about water underneath the coop. Plus, the house is gonna be like, right here. And I don't know about y'all, I love chickens, but I don't want them on my back porch. If you've never raised chickens, I know they're pretty, I know they're cute. But they poop, man, they poop a lot. But we're gonna get another coop, what is? Man, you know who's the worst influence on the farm? It's Bruce. Now currently. Bruce is not really acting up. But, he's apparently told CJ that you should just lick random inanimate objects. Like you should just lick them, they need to be licked, that's why God put them here, lick them. Ain't that right, brother? Ain't that right, buddy? I know you got enough grain, I know you did. I know you did, I'll be back though, and I'll bring you some more, okay? But, we're gonna get another coop, we're gonna put it up here. And we're gonna move the greenhouse, but the same guy that builds the greenhouse, the same guy that builds the coop, the same guy that built my dad's coop. He builds these, he delivers them. And we don't want him to bring us a new one until it's dry out here, which might be a while. He's out here to unload the new one, we want him to move the other one. Show you guys something. This is how bad this water is. But, remember. Sit that down right there. What a blessing. You guys did for us on this driveway. Now I know we've got some water pooling up right here, but that's just a grading issue. It actually helps me to see it do that, because then I can make sure that we level it out, make sure it keeps moving on. But, remember, we're gonna put railroad ties right here. But look at this driveway, look at this. See how hard that is? It's got the aggregate in it, which you guys gifted us as a wedding present, and we sincerely thank you, we cannot thank you enough. And it's holding, man. It's holding. And I'm sure there's a rock and driveway expert out there that's telling me, "It ain't gonna hold forever." I know, that's why I'm gonna fix the ditch. So what's it mean if the killdeer are back? That's a bird, I didn't know that till last year when you guys taught me. But how close is spring if we've got killdeer? Really mad, surely they don't have eggs on the ground yet. Excuse me, ma'am. Pretty clean. Pretty clean, pretty clean. Man, Finn just follow you everywhere, dude. He will follow you everywhere. But I've got some straw in the greenhouse, but I'm trying to save it because. Until March 1st, it could always be really, really cold. Here in northeast Oklahoma, I call it the four states, cause that's what we call it, back in Missouri. Alright, he already ate, you guys know that. He already ate in a trough, he's okay. But. Look at this. Hey Finn, if he comes over here, I want you to rock his world, okay? Just lay him out. But it could at any point just turn bitterly cold. So, I'm hanging on to that straw versus putting new stuff. In the alpaca pen. Still working out details on the shop. It's looking less like a shop and more like a lean too. Because, we wanna live out here. And, not in a shop. Concrete is just crazy expensive out here. If we're gonna spend money on concrete, it's gonna go into a basement, not a shop floor. This base rock you guys gifted us for the wedding? It sets up like concrete, now it's not, it's not concrete, I could take a shovel and dig a hole. But it would stink and take me a very long time. It is highly plausible to use this base rock as the floor of a shop. Especially if it's not gonna get wet, not gonna go anywhere, and I was gonna use railroad ties as like a retaining wall. I don't think we're gonna do it just yet, if you will. Cause if we're gonna spend money on concrete or anything, I really want it to be the house, so. Alright, we're up here at the front of the property. I'll show you what I can, barring like addresses and stuff. This is my ditch, and it looks just like my neighbors across the street, here. So just for reference of where we're at. There's our farm, there's the post I set, that's the driveway. So see how there's not much water in here? Which you're like, "Well Chad, there's not much water in there." Where do you, how's it, how are you saying that it's going that way? Well, it's not being held. It's just flowing through. Like it's clogged up. Just like our neighbors. Cause if you look, every time he grades, man, he takes a little bit more. But that's clogged, this is our culvert. It's 20 feet long. But I have no idea where it comes out, like it's not, it's not anywhere, right? So, all of this can't get out, and then if you look up here, see how, I mean, look at this. This gravel was not here, this is brand new, man, this is the guy's tracks right here. He just did it yesterday. But all this is filled up, it's overgrown, is it partly because it hasn't been maintained? Absolutely. But I don't need help not maintaining it, you know what I'm saying, I don't need to fight you uphill. Cause look at this right here, I mean, that grass is laid down, folks. That's a river. That's probably a majority of our problems, is all this right here. Okay? But we're gonna fix it, cause look. I can't go up too much, cause you'll see addresses. But, see how, see the break in the road right there? So he grades it all the way over here, and then he comes back because of my neighbor's ditch, I'll explain more, let me get closer. So, remember me telling you about that neighbor who went to the county commissioner and told me to clean this act up and. Quit grading into the roads, cause it was costing her rock? This is her place right here, our neighbor, super awesome lady. But, look what she did, this is genius. The county commissioner blew her off. So, she got, I believe her dad did it with an excavator. But he basically dug the ditch out and piled it up on her side, see how high this is? The camera flattens that out, but. Trust me. I'm ground level right now. There you go. It's like two and a half feet, three feet maybe. So, that's what we're gonna do. We're gonna dig our ditch out, and we're gonna take every scoop, we're gonna pile it over here, that way we build a berm. So whoever Mr. Road Grader is, that thinks he can just do whatever he wants, is wrong. Come on, big boy. Woo, you're getting big. You know what a bale spear is?
Yeah.
That's how we move the hay, huh?
Who is that honking?
Huh?
Who is that honking?
It's not honking, it's the, it's a hydrostatic transmission, listen. You hear it?
Yeah.
So, until we change the transmission fluid, it'll make that noise, then it'll go away. You wanna drive?
Uh, no thanks.
Okay. Alright. There, there we go. Woo, look at that sky. Woo, that's a heavy one. You like being with daddy?
Yeah.
Me too, man. Me too. Hey mama. Hi. You alright? Alright, hang on. That's June, but she says, "I'm hungry, feed me." You trying to eat my camera and the wrap? What's wrong with y'all? What's wrong with y'all? You okay? Hi buddy. Go get some hay, go get some of that good stuff, look over there. Feed that baby mama. Feed that baby.
Feed Fred Junior.
Woo. At it girl, get it. CJ, go get you something buddy. That's it.
Uh, I'm trying to remember which of which cow has a baby.
June has the baby coming.
Okay.
She's gonna have a baby, a baby Fred. Are we gonna keep it?
Yeah.
And raise it? And love it?
Yeah.
Alright, if you say so.
But I say so.
Okay. You heard it here. Woo. So we got some good news about the ditch out front, right? But I called the commissioner, huge shout out, I kid you not, and you can look this up. Commissioner Gordon, that's our commissioner. How cool is that? If you don't know who Commissioner Gordon is, well, I don't wanna say we can't be friends because that might eliminate quite a few, quite a few of you, but probably, probably eliminate Ray. Gordon, man, that's Batman, that's the Batman movies, come on. So anyway.
Can you say Batman movies? Can you say Batman movies?
Batman movies.
Oh movies.
Hi buddy. Hi, you keeping everybody safe? Keeping everybody safe, yeah.
But what is he doing?
He's saying hi, hi little donk.
Hi little donk.
Well, here comes Miss Lucy.
What's his pattern?
Okay, there she comes up here. She's been kinda shy.
Why, why are their heads so close to me?
They're just saying hi. Ah, come here. Does that make you nervous?
No, it doesn't, it doesn't make me nervous.
The donk's back there calling. Got the hay closed up. And I text the guy that provides us with hay and he's coming this weekend. Appreciate you buddy, that means a lot not having to worry about hay. Yeah, here's the scoop on the driveway. I called Commissioner Gordon, which I'm gonna say that as many times as I can. But I called Commissioner Gordon and I said, would anybody be upset if I cleaned the ditch? Because the guy that's grading the roads doesn't know what he's doing, just to be flat honest. There's no crown to the road, it's perfectly flat, which is not what you want. You want it to kinda shed it off. But what do you guys advise? I think what I'm gonna do, I'm gonna get my tractor, now eventually this fence and all this brush will be gone, that'll help a lot. I'm gonna take my tractor, I'm gonna stick my nose down there, let's see how deep that is. Oh yeah, it's uh, well, it's uh, about that much. So that is your problem. I bet that can, I bet that meter can's full of water, we gonna bet. I'm gonna take the nose of my tractor and I'm gonna dig down, I'm just gonna start piling it up and I'm gonna go all the way down. And all the way down there, holy cow. He's a beggin'. Goodness. My mom is currently, grandma is losing her mind at the screen right now. Those are babies, look at them babies. Roll the window down. Lean back, look at this guy. That's crawdad.
Where'd he come from?
He lives in the water, look at him, look at all the babies on his belly. Is that cool? I won't touch you, I won't touch you, I'm gonna hold him right here, you get as close as you want, I won't move.
No, no, I can't, I can't move away.
Okay, I'm sorry, you alright?
Yeah, but you scared me.
He won't hurt you, he's way out here, pinching me. He's getting me, what do I do?
Drop him.
Okay. Long story short, I'm super excited because Commissioner Gordon basically just said, have at it, man. So I'm gonna stick my bucket right here in the ditch, I'm gonna stick my bucket right there in the ditch. I'm sure we're gonna dig us a hole and we're gonna build us a berm and we're gonna keep the water where it's supposed to go around the property, right? Let's see him again. Whoa, that's a big dude.
But what is he?
I don't know, you gotta get him. Hey, what'd you think of that crawdad?
There.
Was it cool?
Oh yeah.
What'd a crawdad love to do?
Um, they just like to crawl.
I'm super excited because now we have a game plan, we can take care of this water. Uh, we have an idea of what to do on the pond, hey, if any of you guys have ever used one of those trash pumps? They call it trash because I guess it's for trash water, but it's a pump about the size of a generator. And it sits outside your pond, you run a pipe to your water source and then you throw a pipe like over the dam. And it just pumps all the water out quickly, well, it's gonna, it's quickly, it's like four or five thousand gallons per hour. Uh, probably a hundred times that in that pond. So anyway, it's probably, probably more than that, some of you guys may even know. But I'm super excited, super excited, couldn't be, couldn't be happier with the response. What was funny was the only thing he said was, just don't hit the water meat, or water pipe, water line. And I said, yeah, I said, I was kinda curious if I could get anybody out here to do it for me. And he jokingly said, well, I bet if you hit that water line, somebody'd come out there. I said, I bet they would, if we need help, we'll keep that in mind. But I'd rather do it myself, I have the equipment, we need to rent an excavator for something else. Anyway, yes, the pond guy has an excavator, but I don't really need to waste him up here doing that. If you remember right, it took us almost three months to get them to come set a meter for our water. So no, I don't need to wait the entire rainy season for them to come fix the issue, I only have during the rainy season. You guys need to stay tuned, go check out Aaron and Kylie at Lone Rock Ranch on Facebook and YouTube, I'll link them down below, or Lone Rock Longhorn, whichever one they're under. Cause tomorrow night and Saturday morning, Tessie's moving and Saturday morning, we're picking up three longhorns, two heifers and a surprise.
What surprise is it?
Is that cool?
Yeah.
Alright, so y'all stay tuned, you better go follow them because we're gonna give away something, remember, I promise, I already gave away one piece of merchandise, pizza, I already gave one away, one piece of merchandise. So better stick around, you never know, we may go live, may go live on their channel, I'll link them down below. Ready, hey, let's sign off, can you do it with me? Y'all be good?
I'll be good.
Don't work too hard?
Don't work too hard.
Don't make it weird?
Don't make it weird.
Alright, make it weird, what do we do?
Uh, well, God bless.
Now do deuces.
What, what's do God bless again?
Okay, say God bless.
Yeah, God bless.
I knew it, I knew it. Alright, deuces, smack that green eye, deuces.